When I get that thing.
Okay, I think we're all set now. We have a little bit longer work session than anticipated. Hence, a few minutes late, sorry. But good evening, everyone, and welcome. This is the Minutrista City Council meeting for October 7th, 2024. A quick reminder, if you have cell phones with you, please put them on airplane mode so they don't disrupt the meeting. And second, I would first like to ask you to join me in pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So again, welcome all of you this evening here, as well as those in the future watching on YouTube. I'm Lisa Wayland, I'm the mayor, and to my left are council members Catherine Reckon, Anne McGregor, Peter Vickery, Claudia and Claudia Lacy. And then on the end, we have our city engineer with WSB, Allison Falsky. And then we also have our public works director, Gary Peters. And then Ally Paulfus, who is our director of administration. You always catch me on that one. And then to my right, we have our city administrator Jasper Krugel. Ryan Grim is our finance director. David Abel is our community development director. And then we have Sarah Samsala is our city attorney with Kennedya Braven. And then we have our deputy chief, formerly lieutenant. So I'm getting used to the new title, Craig Squire's. So with that, is there, are there any changes or additions to the agenda? If there are none, all those, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Thank you, Ms. Lacy, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Reckon, any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with a "aye." Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. First item on our agenda is a special presentation. We have on here Ms. Froling with the Lions Club, but I don't believe she's here. So we're going to move on to the Gillespie Center should she appear, show up before our next business item, then she will have an opportunity. So first, Ms. Nelson, you are up with the Gillespie Center update. Thank you for coming and welcome.
Thank you. So first, thank you for having me. I appreciate the time on your valuable agenda. I'm here today to give you a quick update on all the exciting things that have been happening at the Gillespie Center in the last nine months or so. And then I'm going to ask for financials. Just giving a heads up right now. I am a new director there. I started at the end of January. Since then, I came in originally as a contractor just to help them with the new strategy. When I came in, we were operating in the lead and membership was down and the building was kind of quiet. So they asked me to come in and help them with the new strategy. So we worked with the board of directors and our employees and we came up with a new vision, mission, and values for the Gillespie Center. Our vision is broad. It is we envision a thriving community. And by community, we really mean the entire West Tonka area. I actually just had a question today. Is it okay if I come to your center if I live in Long Lake? The answer is absolutely yes, right? We are, we are open to all. And then our new mission is that we're dedicated to providing a prosperous and supportive environment, culture, and space to enrich the life of our community members of all ages. And that's a distinction as well because prior to that, you know, Mr. Gillespie founded the center almost 25 years ago. And we want to be true to his original vision, which was a senior center. But what we're finding is that our demographics have changed and our lifestyles have changed. So what was a senior 20 years ago is, looks a lot different than today. So 20 years ago, for example, I might be sitting every day having coffee in the Gillespie Center, right, with all of my comrades because I'm 56, so I'm technically a senior. But 56-year-olds today have different needs and lifestyles. So we want to be an attractive destination for people of all ages and all diversity. I won't go through, drain our values, but you can see we did work hard to come up with five core values. And what I would call out, I think they're all important. I'll call it two, actually, sustainability, right? Become financially sound, prudent. And the other one is innovation. And that really is learning from the past and taking the past, but bringing it into the future. Again, future looks very different. So if you, yep, there you go, thank you. So from there, we said, okay, how are we going to make this work? How are we going to live our vision and mission? So we came up with a core set of goals. And we're measuring ourselves on these goals. And some of the goals are, we've created yearly goals and then longer term, five-year goals. We're measuring two of the four of them quarterly and then the other two yearly because of the nature of the goal. So of course yearly is to increase profit, right? Increasing our balance sheet. And the other one is new to us too, it's NPS. And that's Net Promoter Score, which is the same thing as customer satisfaction. So when I started, we did a survey of our members and asked them, you know, how likely would you be to recommend the Gillespie Center to your friends and family? We did okay, but we can do a lot better. So we have some pretty aggressive goals, I think, across the board. And we're measuring and we're hoping to achieve these goals. The other ones are increasing our membership, which is somewhat meaningful only because, again, our center is open to everyone, not just members. We talked a lot about getting rid of that word, member. But there's a whole contingent that really like to become members of something. But we're trying to treat it like it's not a member of a country club, right? You don't get the exclusive rights to the center. It is open to all. And really what a member means is a supporter, like you're donating funds to the center. And then the big one is really just use, increasing our program usage, increasing the number of people and lives that we need. All right, so from there, we wanted to align everything we do to those goals and ultimately to our vision, mission, and vision. So we started out aligning our programming and our services. I will not drain this slide at all. But I will just call out that we are looking at all these continually to make sure that they make sense and that they're hitting our demographic that we want to hit and we're adding them things where it makes sense. Also, from a financial perspective, being prudent around that. For example, they used to offer lunches every day. Well, after COVID, it never really came back to the full throttle. So we're now just focused on Wednesdays. And I'm beefing up Wednesdays by adding new programming, free seminars, entertainment, that kind of thing to drive people into the center. Because we want to make sure that we're not losing money on any of our services. Go to the next slide. We're also creating new programming to drive interest. So partnering with a lot of different local people in town to bring in good valuable data that people would be interested in. So for example, Ridgeway Medical, they come in and they do a monthly seminar. We ask for input from the people that attend, what they'd like to hear next time. So we take that input and they, they're really good and they can come up with pretty much any topic. So we recently did a session on brain health. And we did one on diabetes. And there's more coming. We also had a whole series on dementia, which was very popular. We brought in the local Edward Jones representative and he's done some free seminars on like market outlook and annuities versus CDs and of course, estate planning. Medicare, we're just in the middle of a three-part Medicare series. And then Community Talks, I would love to have Ms. Wayland, Mayor Wayland, come in. We just had Jason Holt from MOUNT last week. And then next week, we have the MOUNT Fire Chief. And then I'm hoping to get the Orno Police Chief as well or somebody from that department. We're also bringing in special interest again to get more people in. So we had one on jewelry, which brought in a lot of people at different ages. What we see too is that the members, let's say they're in their 70s, bring in their daughter and/or their granddaughter. And we've seen that across the board and even exercise classes. So that's been fun. Other new things we've done is we've expanded our fitness and health. We're working with Meals on Wheels. And then we've recently brought in somebody to do free eye care adjustments, eyeglass adjustments. And then we're expanding our social, social is so important. So I guess in the past, they used to have a van. We don't have one anymore. I'm not sure what happened to it. But I'm contracting with a local busing company to offer excursions. And they've all been very popular and they've sold out. So we are actually going to a new theater in Bloomington next week called the Sidekick Theater. We have a couple of pre-dates coming up. And I think we might do a Holiday Lights tour as well. We just recently started up a walking club too. So that's extending, actually, Sidekick's off this week to encourage health and social. If you want to flip to the next one. Trying to be conscious of time here. Fundraising, fundraising obviously is an apparatus key for us. So we're trying to expand that as well. And again, hit the multigenerational families. Some cool ones coming up that we have is the Turkey Bingo. So bingo, everybody loves bingo. And being a Turkey Bingo, it's open to all ages. And then we have a Breakfast with Santa coming up. And I'm partnering with the MOUNT American Legion to do a Veterans Day celebration to honor our veterans. One of the things that was first this year is we tried to do an event in conjunction with the Spirit of the Lakes because that parade goes right in front of our center. And it was successful in many ways, but we have a lot of learnings and we're hoping to make it more successful next year. But I think that can be a really big asset to the community. And then one of our most profitable, I should call this out, most profitable fundraisers is working with a company. I'm sure, I'm guessing they're in the, it's Alan Elmas. I'm not sure if they're totally owned. Are they on the island? Okay. But Alan Elmas is great. They've been working with us for years, so this is not new. They offer six cruises for our groups. And I actually marketed out to all of the community senior centers around that area. And what is new this year is that we had record highs. So we made record profits and had record sales. So it was really fun. Next year, I mentioned that we're almost 25 years old, I believe. Next year, we will be 25 and we're hoping to plan a big gala. So we're all invited, you heard it here first. We're excited about that. It'll probably be about this time of year, next year, maybe early November. So the planning is underway already for that. And then marketing, so really trying to align our marketing to our new strategy. So we have a new logo, as you can see here. We did a building refresh, sort of painted it, uplifted it. We actually got lucky too. We do rent the building and we had a rental where a woman came in and did a furniture sale. She does like interior, like she.
Pop-up sales.
Pop-up sales, yeah, like she does model homes and stuff. And so she had a sale in our large room. And at the end of the sale, she donated a whole furniture, like the living rooms that to us. So now the inside looks refreshed as well. So it's kind of exciting. We've updated our website and really trying to really focus on social media to get awareness within the community. So focusing on Facebook and Nextdoor first, and then we'll expand out. Also, working with other businesses to try to sell ad space in our, in our, is that another way to get income in, provide awareness and memberships? Yeah. So lots going on in the marketing arena. Hopefully, you've all been by and saw the new building. Yes, you're welcome to come in anytime. Okay, so operationally, we don't want to leave this out. One of the big changes obviously was switching over from senior community services, which is focused on seniors, obviously, which was a service that they used and that's who they hired their director through to go towards me. So I'm a new director. We also added youth directors onto the board of directors. So we started with one. He is now a senior at MOUNT West Tonka High School and we're hoping to add a second. And then I really want to partner with the high school to, again, infuse that young blood. So like, for example, the robotics team, would have better be people to come in and do tech support for our members, right? They know it the best. So lots of ideas on how to cross-pollinate the high school and the younger generation. Okay, so next, okay. So our ask is while we are making every effort to rebrand and enhance and propel us into the future, we can't do it alone. We are, like I said, we've approved a negative budget this year. It'll take us a while to keep kind of back on our feet. We are doing everything we can on that front, but we would love your support. So I'm here for an ask. I know you've supported this in the past. You're actually my last stop. I saved the best for last because I'm a Minutrista resident, so I'm kind of excited. We started with MOUNT, which makes sense since they're, that's where we are located. And then I've hit the other local cities as well. So since I started with MOUNT, I went with the big ask. I asked for what they were giving us plus like an increase for cost of living adjustment. And they said, wow, you know, did you know that we have a water problem? And so they're having, they're having some budget issues, I'm sure you're aware. So they did end up giving us something, but not as much as we asked for. So I'm coming here today to ask you for $12,000 a year, which is $1,000 a month for five years or as long as we, you know, renew it. And I think I would structure the agreement the same as we had before, if that works for you guys, where we're holocomical to provide you guys updates and, you know, you can see the health of how your money has been used and the kind of thing. Any questions?
I don't think we have any questions. So we're not going to make a decision tonight. We generally don't do that under special presentations or persons to be heard. And as you know, maybe you don't know. But we've already passed our preliminary levy for 2025. And we keep it pretty tight. So I'm not, I think probably it's not going to happen in 2025. I don't think we have an extra $12,000. So at some time in 2025, we can have this on a work session to discuss it amongst the council. We have a new council member coming on board as well. So I think that would be a good time to do, to discuss this. So, but great, great job. Glad you're on board, you're doing a great job. And I love the look of the Gillespie Center. It's updated, like you said, it's really a nice amenity for a lot of people involved in surrounding areas. So with that, do you have any questions? I'll ask any other questions.
Well, so thank you again for your time, I appreciate that. Just let me know then how, if you need anything from me or when I should move back with you, right? And the other thing I could ask too is if there's any opportunities outside of the financial request to partner. So for example, if you could put any kind of event, art fundraising events, maybe in your newsletter or on your website, you know, those kind of things.
Yeah, okay. And Ally Paulfus would be the lady that you should talk to because she is our communications expert. So yeah, get, take her card, I think it's out there on lobby there. And then, yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
So now we're going to move on to our next special presentation and that's our third quarter financial update, Mr. Grimm.
Yes, sir, thank you, Madam.
And it's not Grimm, right?
No, it's actually.
The financial update is not Grimm.
So no, as you can see in the packet, pages three through 14, everything's pretty much tracking as it should be in this time of year for third quarter. Got listed there, we're about at 59%. And obviously, we have our second half taxes coming in in early December. So that'll push us close to our budgeted revenues there. You know, building permits, you probably saw on the report, we're doing pretty well there. It'd be interesting to see how October, November, you know, finishes up and even into December. You know, we'll probably come close to our budget number there. But whether we quite get there or not will be determined. So as far as, and then I did reference, obviously, last year, we, we had, you know, really high commercial permits for the mock and tunes in the apartment buildings. So we're more in line with where we were in 2022 at this time than 23. But that obviously makes sense because some of those one-time items. Expenditures were basically almost where we were at last year at this time, about, you know, 78%, which makes sense because some things we paid through the whole year already. Even our fire department, our fire quarterly payments, we paid even now through, for the full year. So yeah, everything seems to be doing pretty well. I guess I'll maybe stand for any questions for either the revenue expenditure, cash investments report and go from there.
So yeah, I think my biggest concern was building permit revenue because we're still like 200 adds at this date into September. Does that go through end of September?
Yeah, this was through September.
So we still have 227,000 or nearly 228,000 under.
Yep.
So, Mr. Abel, any, do we generally get a lot of permits in October, November timeframe?
Yeah, generally trying to get ahead of the weather.
Okay.
We have had a few come in, come in the door here recently.
Are you seeing that we're going to hit our projections, do you think?
We'll get close, I would say, yeah.
Close meaning what? Let's close, let's close, okay. I won't hold you to it.
No. And hopefully, like there's some items where our, like our investment in market value or interest is sort of tracking, but you know, had to. We've been budgeting that conservatively because the market was pretty tough for quite a while. Todd can attest to that, right? But yeah.
All right. Any other questions? All right, looks good, thank you very much. So that concludes our special presentation. So now we're going to move on to our consent agenda items. And they are, are there any you wish to remove? Hearing none, then. There's kind of a lengthy list here, so bear with me. But A, approve a city council minutes from September 4th, 2024. B is approve a resolution number 76-24, authorization of ordinance number 491 by title and summary. C is a resolution to approve our claims. D is a resolution to adopt certification for unpaid utility fees for 2025 taxes. E is approve a license agreement from material storage site Excel Energy. F is approve our temporary liquor license for the Lions Holiday Tree Lighting Event, which is going to be on December 5th. Please join us. And G is approve a temporary liquor license for the Tonka Brew Fest, which is November 2nd. And then H is approve agreement for the legal services with Campbell Knutson for prosecuting attorney fees for services. I is approve the Lake Shore setback variance at 33.6 feet, Hardest Scrabble Road North. J is approve a Lake Shore and Sideyard setback variance at 35.110 Kings Point Road. K is a resolution of authorizing filing of application for Henbren County Youth Activities Grant. And I is award a contract for Summit Infrastructure LLC for the installation of, okay, OBIC lining in man halls. Really important stuff, no, it isn't, but anyhow. M is accept improvements and authorize final payment for well number six. N is accept improvements and authorize final payment for the Gene Lanier Park. And O is a St. Bonnie Facias Fire Department Pension Increase Request. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items? A through all. A, yeah, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor and Ms. Reckon, make that motion. All those in favor signify with a "aye." Aye. Aye. All opposed, motion passes. So if you are here for any of the consent agenda items, you are approved. So next, we move on to our business items. We don't have any public hearings. First business item is awarding the sale of general obligation bonds, Series 2024, in your written aggregate amount of $4,330,000, fixing their form and specifications, directing their execution, and delivering and providing for their payment. Mr. Puff, you are here this evening once again. Welcome back.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Tapping your propellers, senior citizens, I'm looking forward to it. And so great day to sell bonds, let's just say. You were the only ones selling competitively this morning. So I just wanted to say that. Before we came into the sale day report, we did have three bidders kind of set up and we got two more. So yay, we got, we got five bidders. Before I go through the sale day report, I want to talk about the rating report just a little bit. It's also attached to the, to the sale day report. So a couple of weeks ago, Jasper, Ryan and I, we walked through with the analysts from Standard and Poor's. They asked us questions and anything that they couldn't really see just from all the data that we gave them, they asked, they asked questions. And, and so the last time you were rated was in 2023. So we did focus on the 2022 audit, which we did have then, and the 23 audit, and then the budget for 2024. So there was some, you know, updates and to get them current that we had to talk to them about. So you did maintain your AA plus stable bond rating, I'll call it that. If you look at the credit rating, the, it's a pretty good read. It's light reading, it doesn't take much to go through that. It's kind of nice, a little discussion of Minutrista. But to cut to the chase, they do say at the beginning that in their view, Minutrista's above-average economic indicators, solid management practices, and healthy reserves support the rating. So it's all been there. We have a pretty big project coming up, right? So we could talk about that some. That's going to be supported by water revenues, right? So that's something they need to see some historical data on. You know, we always shoot for an upgrade, but there's always something to do in Minutrista, right? So we don't want to set ourselves up for a fall either. We want a stable rating. So we're working on it as best we, as best we can. Probably the my thing, well, the other things that are in our control, right? Our, our financial performance, how we perform throughout the year, reserves and liquidity, which is, I think, as good as you can get right now. I'm just going to top on that. We can't do much with the debt and liabilities. We still have to keep moving on, on stuff. We wish we could pay cash for everything, but we can't. We do want to issue debt for those that are benefiting from the project and are actually paying for the project. That's sort of the other concept of issuing bonds. So management, like long-term financial planning, that could help a little bit too, looking out a little further into the future, would be in our control. Again, things you can't control, you're, you're at the top of the economy, you're at the top of reserves and liquidity. It's just those other, those other three that we could, could improve upon if you so choose.
So what would be the next step up is AA plus stable? What would be the next one?
Yeah.
Triple A.
Oh, that's triple A, okay. I didn't know that was AA plus, stable plus or something. I didn't know.
Yeah, no, you're right, you're right. So you're at the cuts. And then the more, of course, history we have, sewer revenues and water revenues for those bonds, like part of this bond issue tonight, history on that helps. Otherwise, projections are good. But you know, it's going to take two years, three years of good history and that's going to help, I think, in the future on the, on the debt side. Then they sort of take that off.
Will they have to do a rerating for our funds that we might be sharing next year?
Yeah, rerate, yeah, they rerate. If you do a direct placement with like the state or somebody like that, then we wouldn't get a rating on that. That's called a private placement. It's almost like a bank placement. It would not require a rating. So if we sell them off to a market like we did tonight, then we'll get another rating, yeah.
Is that good or bad?
That's fine, that's, that's, that's good.
Do you anticipate we'd still maintain the AA plus?
I would, I would think so. They also just want to know about it too. We already told them that that's common.
Oh, okay.
And so that's, and so that's good. And then they do do surveillance over the couple of years in case you're literally flying and they don't know what you know.
Well, we did, we did talk about raising a lot of rates today.
And that's, that's good, right? That's great. Yep, so that's, that's the rating and that's. So the sale day was here in the last one. And we, we set this all up. We set this all up for 4/1 at 3:30 for, you know, the equipment. We're financing it, so you know, the improvements to the water system. And, and we did get the, you know, the low bid came from TD Securities out of New York. They watched your last bond too. So they must like you because if you look at the bid tab relation in here, they are at a 3.5. Oh, I think we projected 3.9 something. So we're 43 basis points or so lower projection. And then the next one's from like Piper and Baird. They're local, pretty much, they're 3.57-ish. And then the other two are kind of close. So they're kind of going kind of chunks like that. So Bach Financial out of Milwaukee and Northland Securities out of Minneapolis were 3.59, 3.6, whatever. So TD Securities likes them because, you know, that's, they're sort of on their own there. Kind of up to them, up on their own there, so which is, which is good. So what they did and what you're experiencing in the past with other municipalities where they're just coming when they issue bonds, I think in the last, seems like eight years now, six to eight years. They purchase these with, they give you a premium bid. And Mayor, I talked to that a little bit. So they're giving us more money than we need for the bond issue. If you look at the bid tab relationship, you'll see that coupons. Uh, if you look, um, at the bid tab relationship, uh, you'll see that coupon rate is like a four percent. And that's what's, that's what you're actually paying. That's usually stamped on the, we offer you, what their customers are going to give, which is more reflection of where the market is. It's a two point seven to three point seven, let's just say. So the difference between those two interest rates is about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And so staff and I decided to lower your bond. We don't need the extra money. We still are fully funded. If we take their cash, their premium cash and the other bond issue, so your debt service is much, much more than our pre-sale reports. So we're paying on less bonds, a higher interest rate on less bonds, which is really what that yield ends up, ends up being. Yep, yep. So if you were, if you bought these bonds, you have four percent stamped on it, but you probably get two point five, four percent in reality. Because you gave TD Securities some cash for the ability to hold that higher interest rate one. Because I think they think their rates are going to go up still. That's, that's what I'm thinking they're thinking. And that's been, that's been the case for many years already. So, um, so that difference between the, the low bid and the highest bid is about sixty thousand dollars. So that's why we don't choose somebody just to negotiate with. We send this out and have them bid, because you never know which one, who had the appetite, right, for this bond issue today. So, um, it's an easily understood bond, double A plus stable credit rating is, is great, is a great credit, you know, they're going to get paid, right? You know, they're going to get paid. You're not going anywhere, right? So that's, that's, that's great. Um, so I wanted to explain that premium a little bit. So, uh, reduction, uh, also in the cost of issuance and the underwriters discount, which is the fee that TD Securities gets. So decrease in cost, decrease, uh, in, in the fee for the underwriter to reoffer. These bonds to the public and you get the premium bids. So, so we're all good. It was a great credit rating. So. So we're in good, we're in good shape. Uh, the closing date is October twenty-eighth. You get all the money on that day. Bond counsel from Kennedy Grayven has a resolution for you to consider then that would award the sale to, to TD Securities. And for this price, and then that's what I've been looking for. Counsel consideration, I think I covered. I think I covered everything. I just want to make sure I give you the whole, the whole thing here and then you folks can ask me questions if you have any, but I probably already answered.
Hopefully. Just one question. So in our resolution, it says original aggregate amount of four million, three hundred and thirty, but we're only doing four one, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So is the resolution correct then?
I think we got a corrected one or updated one from Kennedy Grayven. If not, my presentation gets this all sort of correct.
Okay. So when we make the motion, it's four point one, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? So good, good news, I guess.
Yeah.
If there's no other question, is there then a motion awarding the sale of general obligation bond, series twenty twenty-four, in the original aggregate amount of four point one million? Fixing their form and specifications, directing their execution and delivery and providing for their payment. So moved. Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. McGregor made that second. Beat you to it, Mr. Refkin. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thanks again for the business. We appreciate it. It's fun to work with.
All right. Next up, we have a water main replacement cost share agreement. And I believe that's.
It is, it is, uh, myself and likely Gary will, will chime in. So, um, give me a second. I'll pull up a couple different figures here. Two twenty-three. Thank you. All right. So what we have before you, um, kind of go into detail about the kind of history that we've, um, had with the school and the water mains that have been going across the school since the nineteen seventies. It's an unconventional relationship, I would say. Generally, I think everybody's accustomed to, we have water lines in the right of way or we have a, uh, utility and easement or utility, um, and drainage and utility easement over these things. The school site is unique in the sense that we have water main that goes across there. Some of it's kind of used by the school. It's, it is necessary and Gary can attest to that. The, the line that goes across that connects Sunny Field and, um, Game Farm Road. That's something that's essential for our, our water system that we need. Now, how we want to approach this and, and continue the relationship, we can, we can have a conversation about that. But I wanted to give a little bit of history about why it's there, um, and, and why we're here today to talk about it. So obviously I think everybody knows that the, there was a referendum that was proposed by the school district, which was passed last year. Um, and the school is doing a, a series of, of improvements to their campus. And with that, um, you know, as we started seeing those plans at a staff level, one of the questions that came up, well, maybe we should look at this water main that has had a series of breaks over the last ten years. That, that right now, just so everybody's aware, the current relationship we have with the school is that Gary's crew, the Public Works crew goes in. If there's a water main break, they repair it if they can. And then what we do is we bill back the school district fifty percent of that cost. So, and that's on every single water line that isn't a service line on that campus. So that's the way we've operated for years. And that's how this proposal initially is, is continuing, is proposing to continue to operate, um, to work in collaboration with the school district. Because it is unconventional, but we both need those water lines that go across the, to school. So that's a little bit of history here. Um, what is being proposed is the areas on the map, which I'll show in a little bit, are Duck Del Iron. You maybe remember Duck Del Iron being a conversation about the Morning View neighborhood. Same stuff, kind of same vintage year almost in the nineteen seventies. So, um, Gary, I think there's been at least seven, seven water main breaks in the last ten-ish years. I can imagine there's been more, uh, in the past too, that just aren't documented. That's just kind of, it's basically, um, before Gary and then after Gary. We have a lot more documentation, it seems like, on these things. So, um, what this would do is upgrade that pipe to C nine hundred, which is our standard spec. What we've done, and this is kind of a unique collaboration too, is, you know, we have our city spec for our water main. The school has their engineers that work on the project and supply them with water. What we've had to do is kind of use our engineering group to kind of get these numbers and, and look at this site. And then they had to work in collaboration with Larson Engineers who are with the school to make sure that that meets their needs. There's a lot of like coordinating going on and that's the majority of kind of the challenges with working on this site is that, you know, the school is doing a project and the reason it's happening is because the, um, in the sequence that it is, is, you know, there's going to be land that's tore up at the school. And this is a good opportunity to replace some of this aging and, and kind of dilapidated, um, water, water main. Um, as part of the, the conversation that we've had with the school, we've identified areas that would be fifty fifty split between the school and the city. Areas that would be, um, one hundred percent the school and areas that, uh, Taylor Ice Arena would be one hundred percent, um, on the hook for. So there's kind of three parties that are involved here with this cost share agreement. And, um, all the parties right now are on board with the, with the plan that is being proposed. Um, the plan, and I'll say option one as a spoiler to, we, we did look at a couple of different options as well to see once if there's any appetite for city council to maybe look at that relationship and then, and then change it potentially and maybe solidify what, what we have going on on the site. As opposed to, you know, continuing something that's been going on for fifty plus years. So the, the estimated cost that you'll see in your packet, um, for Minatrista to do this is just over three hundred and nine thousand. The school district would be three fifty-one. Taylor would be just over seventy-nine thousand. So that's kind of the breakdown for what you see in your packet. The financing mechanism for this, so I guess I'll start with the bidding. So the, the, the school district will kind of facilitate the bidding of this and incorporate it into, if, if approved, um, incorporate it into their plans that they bid out and they'd have a contractor that bids it. In twenty twenty-five, when we sell our bond for the water treatment plant, we would attach this amount, whatever the bid comes back to, to our, um, bond that we sell. We would then enter into an agreement with the school district to reimburse us for the amount, however it shakes out, that they owe us for the project, based on this option one. So we would be the financier or we would be the financer of the, of the project. The school would then, you know, pay us slightly before we would have to make our bond payment. So it would be no cost to us. They would have issuance costs, all that stuff built in, um, to the financing piece of it. So that's kind of the option one. Option two, uh, which, which Gary and myself and, and Dan looked into after some conversations with council, the council members, is, well, what if we could, you know, solidify the, the, uh, relationship with the school and say, this is just our main school. You're not part of it. You're going to, you know, take water off of it, have service lines essentially, but that north, south line and maybe the, the one on Sunny Field is all one hundred percent the city. What is that going to cost? Um, and then Gary got to thinking, well, if we're going to do that, maybe we should upgrade the size of the pipe that goes north and south to a twelve inch as opposed to an eight, um, because if we're going to, for future. So if we're going to go in there, we're going to do this work. You know, maybe now is the time to do the upgrade from the eight inch to the twelve inch. So we looked at some numbers for that. I don't have a figure yet, but, so the option one, remember our contribution, our, our part of the project is three hundred and nine thousand. For option two, which is an eight inch line, the only thing that changes is the eight inch line that goes north and south, uh, across the property from Sunny Field to Game Farm. We would be at four hundred and four thousand. So roughly about another ninety-five thousand, uh, more. And then if we would want to upgrade that to, um, twelve inch, it would be five hundred and eighty-one thousand. So, you know, whatever that is, two hundred and seventy-two thousand more. So there's a bunch of different options here. I guess I want, the one thing I want to just really drive home is that we need, we need that connection from Sunny Field to Game Farm Road. The way it's set up right now, a little unorthodox with the school, admittedly. You know, Gary and I, when I first started, we had this conversation like, why are we doing this? Well, this is the way we've done it. If that's something that we want to change as a city council, we can kind of set that table to, to start that conversation with the school district. Now, um, you know, this would be new to that, that group too, if we start talking about this. So, um, changing what we have proposed here. So with this, you'll also see the item after this one that, that, uh, Mr. Peters wrote, um, is the task order for A to S to do the engineering. I think that's for just over thirty-one thousand dollars, um, for this project. So, and that would be split with the school district as well, um, whatever the proportion is for each group and Taylor. So, um, what I'm looking for is, do we want to do this project? Um, if the answer is yes, you know, what option is it that we want to pursue? I will note that options two or three, what that would do is we would, we would basically tell the school district, hey, this is one hundred percent us, the areas. And I'll pull up a map here shortly. And then, you know, everything else is one hundred percent the school. And we'd have a real clear partition about who's maintaining what, um, moving forward into the future. And the, the cost share agreement would reflect that, um, but it would cost a little bit more than what I think we're proposing. So that's kind of what we need city council direction on if we want to pursue. I don't know if I missed anything, Gary, if you want to, you want to chime in. Um, I probably did.
No, that covers everything.
Thank you. Right. And the map?
Thank you. I have to get into my email real quick. So I don't know if you guys can.
So I, I brought this up and then Anne and I met Jasper. My biggest issue is we need to change why we're paying fifty percent of water main rates on school property that are directly our water main. The north, south one from Sunny Field to Game Farm totally agree as ours, we need that. But the one that dead ends in the tennis courts, that's not benefiting our residents. That one that dead ends bus garage, that's not benefiting our residents. We don't pay for water main breaks on my property. We're cut off this. We wouldn't pay for it. Connecting the blue one and their parking lot. And if we're going to fix it, we need to set what part of this we're responsible for and what part of it the school is now responsible for. The idea on the map that Jasper's coming up with, Anne and I basically talked through today to get numbers and figure out what it would cost us to basically change this scope and go, okay, well, we'll replace the main line from Sunny Field to Game Farm where it needs to be. The school will be one hundred percent responsible for the new line running across the parking lot. The school responsible for the, basically from Sunny Fields to the bus depot line. That would be their portion. We would cover the park on Sunny Field because at some point people on Sunny Field might want water mainly with the bus. That was my and Anne's thought on this and hopefully the color coordinated nicely for us. My thought is, yes, it will cost more, but then we'll be clearly stated who is responsible if this breaks. And the only part we future will be paying for would be what benefits our resident, not just the school. That's my opinion for the numerous long conversations.
So just a little visitor, why this occurred too is when the tower was, the Sunny Field Tower was built in two thousand, they needed a looping connection is what I am imagining. Why they added where it comes down from the driveway, right through that area was added at that time to carry the looping around. Um, so that's the reason that's there. I mean, otherwise the primary purpose of the entire lines on there was just to serve the school area itself. So once they put that in there, then the main line being, you know, was pretty much our responsibility. The one being, the, the two were the only break that we've had, we had one, well, two of them. We had one on a higher lead that's in the courtyard and then one that was on the lead going north south. Otherwise the other side that we've had all been in lines that are right now servicing, you know, not only the school, but we use as our transmission lines. So two of the seven technically there's what the five of them have been on lines that we, um, that we are personally using.
And the spot connecting Sunny Field to the green and blue, that line north south, and that isn't being changed, you know, the, the gray zone, that's not colored at all.
This one? This one?
Yeah. That, that's there. That doesn't need to be replaced. So like that's still.
That is an eight inch currently. And like I said, and I did talk to Jake Puffy, who did the water modeling. He has an agreement that if we are going to do something, might want to consider bumping that up to, if you're going to pull that much, a little bit extra is not to make that nice reveal, to bring that up to twelve inch. So you would be connecting twelve inch to twelve inch there. It's currently six. We're upgrading to eight if we, you know, just do a little section, but, uh, extend it through. The only other option we have is to, um, not do that line and go all the way out to, from on Sunny Field all the way out to County Road. You know, it's eighteen hundred feet, I believe it is, bring twelve inch that way. But now you run into permitting with the county, interior to County Road to get hooked up. So this is conceivably the best plan at this point. So, and a twelve inch at this point, if we're going to do it for future use, who knows when it'll be expanded, you know, if, you know, anything can go that way. Now would be the time to consider it.
To upgrade it and still.
Upgrade a twelve inch from eight.
Oh, wait.
It'll, it'll serve fine, but a twelve would definitely be a lot more beneficial as looping and everything.
Gary, is there a twelve inch from the tower down to the treatment plan?
It is twelve inch right now, all the way down Game Farm. So Game Farm from the treatment plan of the house all the way down through up to one ten. That's all twelve inch. Everything from the tower coming down to Sunny Field was twelve inch. Why they changed it right there, the eight inch, they brought eight inch in, I don't know. It would have been nice if they were to run twelve inch across and twelve over, but.
I'm guessing it was eight.
But cost on the ceiling. So.
So you're saying from Game Farm all the way down to Sunny Field, changing all of that to twelve inch?
That would be my recommendation. I mean, that's, you know, your guys' call on that for the pricing, for the, for the, for the money that's there right now, now's the time to do it.
So I think what I'm looking for, there's a couple of different things. There's a lot of moving targets here. Do we want to continue the relationship that we've had with the school and kind of had this, hey, if it's a water main on the school property, we're going to split it fifty fifty? I haven't proposed this to the school, um, but I can only imagine, I, Gary and I think that they'll like it because their cost is going to go down. Ours is going to go up. But then what we would do is in this area that you see the dark blue, we would then get a drainage and utility. I mean, that one's already in the right of way, but going across this whole property, we get a drainage and utility easement. It would be our one hundred percent cost to maintain into the future. We would tell the school district, everything else other than, uh, everything else that is on the site other than what is ours is now the school's to maintain. And, um, I wanted to just make sure it's clear, we, we would help them out in the sense that if they have a water main break, we would likely continue that and we would bill them back, you know, and that's anywhere from twenty-five hundred to ten dollars a dollar is a pop a time. So we would still continue that if, unless it's otherwise directed not to, um, but that, that's kind of where we're at. So I, I'm kind of looking for direction. Do you want to, you want to change the relationship and go with this model that we have here? I'd have to, we have to talk to the school district about it. Um, and if that's the case, um, are you still okay with us helping them out on the, on the site?
So I just have one more question. So is there a water line on the north side of Sunny Field from? Sunny Field from, yeah, from there over?
No.
We're putting that, the blue, we would be putting in.
This one we'd be putting in. Yep, we would be adding that.
It's not on our map here.
Yeah.
This is what's currently there. So I go down, this is where it would be going in and it's this one right there.
So presently, the line, the three line that's going north or east-west, there, Jasper, you took from the line towards the existing, um, practice field there. There's another line that goes through the tennis courts there going north that connects that lead, that's the service lead to this, to the bus garage. So once we're eliminating all that piping through there, you add it, it's all things for the future expansion, then it would sub off to the bus garage from there. So.
Okay.
And I will note one more thing. This is in, this wasn't in our CIP in 2024 for 25, but it is, it has been included in our CIP for 25. That was just included in the packet. We only had 300,000 associated with it. If we would go with a different option, like the 12 inch upgrade option, we'd have to add that in. I don't know how much of an impact that'll have over time because we bond for it, you know?
Our bonding is ten months.
Not much, not much. So, you know, we're talking maybe, maybe $280,000 over 20 years. So it's, it's not much. So I don't think it'll affect the rates that much. Eric, I don't think we'd have to adjust rates if we went with option three with the 12 inch upgrade.
I like the idea of separating the school from the city.
Yeah. And then, and then also with this, then we would get the easement agreements so that we're, we're clear on that. I think after talking about drainage and utilities and we want, I think we want a real clear easement agreement. Um, and then, and then what else? And then also upgrading at this time?
Yeah. I mean, we have the 12 inch, we're just waiting, so if we're going to do it, let's put it in and not rip it up in five years too.
Correct. You're doing, now you're doing a smart move and prepare for a few, I say, you know, right now it probably won't be used for quite a few years. Once it expands, it's there.
Yeah. I don't think there's anything going on in that area.
No, not really.
It's you.
How long does, does the new pipe, how long will that last?
C900, it'll last at least 100 years.
Okay.
Way more than that.
You can make a promise because we'll be good to have all this recorded. That a new console for which part?
Well, so there's a couple, if I may, there's a couple steps. I obviously have to talk to the school district about this and I think that they, they'll be okay with it. It's a little bit of a change, but, um, as long as we're not changing too much up with the project, kind of coordination and schedule, um, they'll continue to have this as, be part of their project and then we'll finance it next year. This is a 25 and 26 project. So depending on what area of the site they have tore up at, you know, in 25 versus 26, this will be a multi-year project. So, um, I'm trying to think if there's anything else we should get clarified, Gary, right now. But I'll, I'll have to, I mean, if it's okay with the school, I'm okay to proceed. I'm, I'm getting from the group, um, with the 12 inch.
Motion?
Yes. So this cost share agreement, I'd like a motion, um, to approve that. And I can modify it with those kinds of terms as, um, as we've, we said, we're going to have to modify it actually kind of a lot. So maybe we'll have to bring it back. Yeah, we'll have to bring, well, yeah, there's a lot of maintenance and stuff in there.
Bring it back.
Yeah. And that's fine. And then, um, we'll, we'll have it reflect what was discussed here.
And then will you also bring back the task order then, just to make sure that that's going to align with this change?
Uh, it will. We know it will. So I think you guys are okay to, to, if you feel comfortable, uh, proceeding with the task order, but I will bring back the cost share agreement with some modifications. Um.
The task order's kind of must have there, ready to pull this all switch and then replace. We can get our all announced earlier done.
Okay.
Why not for, for when the school was there still?
All right. Okay. So, um, you're going to bring back the water main replacement cost share agreement and then now we're going to move on to the, a task order for A2S for the water main improvements at the West Dunk High School campus, but, um,
It will reflect this plan.
It'll, it'll more or less reflect this plan with the 12 inch.
Correct.
Yeah. And, and adding the other one.
So the task order should cover that still, the 31,000, right? Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. Engineering stays the same, it's just the number of trench changes.
Yeah. And what, and just so you know, once this moves forward, it'll work with Kennedy and Graven to develop a, um, repayment agreement too. So that's another agreement that's coming as well in the, in the future, once it gets bid out and we know, you know, final number's pretty close.
Okay. All right. So is there a motion then to approve task order, um, 13 with A2S for the water main improvements as we have discussed?
Some motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. McGregor. Jazzy made that, um, made a motion and, uh, Mr. McGregor seconded that. Any other questions, comments? If hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes by both. So that concludes our business items. So we can move on to our administrative items, the staff reports.
Yes. If, if I may, um, I'll give this to, to Ally. Um, we need to, well, I can, I guess I can take it straight. Well, we, we have to canvass our, our election results. So we're looking for a date to, a special meeting to do that. I think we're looking at, is it the eighth, ninth?
Yep. So the eighth is the earliest, we can do November 8th. The 11th is veteran's day. So we're looking at eight, the 15th, but not the 11th. We can do any kind of day to just take five minutes.
We just need, we just need three people as well.
We have the eighth, okay, or what?
Yeah. So we can do November 8th. It's a Friday. So I did that coming, but if they were 12, that's clear.
How about the 12?
Just be one more.
It would be at, um, like 9:30.
And the 12?
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
At 9:30?
Yeah.
November 12th, 9:30 AM.
Okay. I'll send out a meeting.
You're 9:45.
Sure. We could just do 10.
Well.
9:45? Okay, 9:45.
9:45. It's supposed to end at nine. We're going to be in mound. So I, I'm assuming even if it's 15, we, yeah, there's a, 9:30, 9:30 and we're going to have to leave the meeting promptly at, yeah, there you go.
So we're doing 9:30?
9:30.
Okay.
Okay. I'll send out a meeting.
Okay. Meeting request and then posting that, of course.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you. All right.
Um, the only other thing I'll, I'll add is we're in the middle of holiday tree lighting planning. So I think that's all coming along. You'll, you see there's a little activity over there that's, there's going to... That is going to be a concrete slab with a puro on it for Santa to sit in and people can go visit Santa there. Um, and then there's some grading going on and then there's also some, um, hiding of electrical wires. I'm not looking at Gary over there, um, doing that over there. So it's going to be a lot cleaner. We kind of know, I think there's over, I don't know, Ally knows, like, there's like 1,100 people that have, are interested in the event already. So, um, we'll see.
It was great back there and it's going to be even greater because, because, um, we're going to also have fireworks and, um, at the end. And also I just want to make a note that, um, Lifetime Fitness is contributing, one, I think our biggest contributor? I think so. So, um, um, thank you to Mr. Akbari for that. So, um, and then I think we also have some other, um, contributors as well. So.
I think we, we have like $10,000 in commitments for donations? Not, not in, not in hand yet, but commitments, which is, which is very good. Yeah. Yeah. So because of the number of people, we've, uh, reached out to WRA to see if we could have people park there and then, um, get a shuttle back and forth just because there's, there's a lot of, it's not optimal for parking here.
At night.
Uh, at night especially. So we're looking at that.
Reserve parking for council again though, right?
If, sure. It's, uh, first come, first served. Um, but there, there will be, there will be two buses, um, going back and forth for the duration. Oh, they donated one? Nice. Yes.
Okay. We should advertise that. Cause I know last time a lot of people didn't even know, know about that.
Is there going to be a better place to like put them or you can see them better?
Next to the wine tent.
Because it was in the back of the truck.
Back of the CSL truck, yeah. Yeah. Everything will get a little bit better.
So you're going to have two shuttles so that they can...
Yeah, like 10 minute.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Are we going to have that little fire pits out again?
Oh, yeah. And more.
Fire pits will be out. Um, Mack and Toons will be selling, I think, like hot dogs and brats and some other stuff. Um, they won't have the Mack Shack if you're familiar with that, but they will have, you know, because they put it away already. Um, but they will have similar stuff to that and some treats and stuff that they'll be selling inside the tent, um, next to the West Dunk Light. So it'll be good and we'll see how that goes. Um, I don't think we're going to do smore, we're not doing smores this year. That was, if you want to bring your own smore supply, you can, um, but we're, yeah. It was, it was a lot of work and it, I don't know if we got the bang for the buck on it. It was kind of expensive, but if people want to bring smore stuff, they can, I suppose. I don't know. Um.
So the fires are just...
Warmth. Yeah. Yeah. So we'll see. Um, but yeah, things are moving forward on that. So we're getting pretty close and you'll see some activity.
All right. Awesome. Thank you. Any other staff report?
I, I do need a liaison. We're, um, attempting to have a parks meeting tomorrow night. So hopefully, we don't know if we have a quorum yet though. So if we don't have a quorum, it'll be next month. So I need to volunteer for that.
I can't be there tomorrow night. So if you have a meeting, you...
Sure.
You'll just have to tell us what happens.
And then we are going to have a planning commission meeting on the 28th. So I'm also looking for a liaison for that.
I might be able to do that.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anything else? Otherwise we'll move on to, um, uh, council reports. Um, any council reports?
On the Mayor's Air Creek watershed, two things. They are going to start fixing the Kingswood lead, starting to wash the silver, excuse me, into Tamarack property. So that should be starting up quite shortly. So that's great. We should get it done before the snow. And then they, uh, Independent County has raised, um, their fees to the water districts. So we'll probably see some increase in our cost next year, but I think, you know, it's not going to be a huge amount.
And they provide the technical service?
Yes, they do. They do a lot of the, you know, day-to-day work for the watershed.
We, we should suggest that they do it like the assessors office. Why not?
Free right now, no cost to city.
Just a suggestion.
It might not apply.
You know, hey. All right. Any other report? Otherwise, um, just a thank you, Mr. McGregor, for that letter to the, uh, Met Council. Um, hopefully yours and mine will actually get read. Um, and then, um, one of my suggestions, I don't know if, if this is possible, but I'd like to monitor to see when they're going to be discussing this. And then if I, I would like to, if I'm available, I'd like to go to that meeting. Uh, sometimes, you know, you can send emails, you can send letters, but, um, if you show up in person and kind of voice and express your concerns, sometimes that has a, a bigger impact. So if you could let us know when they're going to be discussing it and if it's going to be a public meeting or public hearing, if we will have an opportunity to speak, I think it would be great if the council, as many people from the council and staff could go.
Yeah. I will, I'll keep an eye on it. I'll look for it. One thing to keep an, an eye out for as council, I know, and if I see something that, you know, might rise to the level of, hey, we, we should maybe write a letter about it, but they're releasing all of their policies to, um, include in the imagined 2050 plan. So that's what, this was the housing policy that they, that we're doing a public comment on. But there's a whole, I don't even know, whole bunch of different policies that'll, that'll basically fill in the blanks for the 2050 plan. Um,
One of them is water. I think we need to keep tabs on their water policy because I kind of, just kind of feel like they're trying to kind of overreach again in certain areas. Just, just, you know, keep an eye on. Okay.
Yeah. So I'll keep an eye on that. And if there's like a call to action, I'll, I'll reach out to the group.
But I did tell them that they wanted to take on our water infrastructure. They're more than welcome to. It's only about 31 million dollars. They did, they declined. Just, I wonder why. Anyhow, thank you. Thank you. Um, and then the other thing, um, I'll be attending the Northwest League on Wednesday. It's, uh, it's actually a Minnesota, um, Mayor's Association meeting as well. It's kind of a combined thing. And we'll be touring the, uh, transportation, um, facilities out there in Medina before our, uh, dinner and meeting. And then, um, tomorrow afternoon, tomorrow afternoon, right? Not tomorrow morning. Yeah. So these 7:00 AM meetings, I'm, we're not liking, but...
I like them.
You can go to the next one. Um, so there's a 3:30 meeting. Um, the three of us will be there. Um, it'll be in St. Bonnie. It's the fire partnership meeting. We'll see how that goes and we'll let you know.
Okay.
And, uh, that's all I can think of for now. So with that.
Switch turn.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. McGregor. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes by both. Thank you. Great job, Stan. Thank you very much. And good job, council.